Memo and I would love to discuss it. Shall we move through? Well, I don't really know what to do, actually. When, uh, Quinn, have you had an opportunity to look at the? Uh Jenny's memo on budget content considerations?
No, whenever anything comes out the first day, I I work a regular nine to five, so I won't, I won't be checking anything day of. Just in 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 future reference, but no, I have not either.
All right, well, um, I would like you particularly to review a few salient points in that. Is this okay with everybody? We look at, go through this memo a bit? Okay, so. It's not appropriate to say gentlemen, start your engines, but uh, committee members, please access this memo.
I, if I can start, kick us, kick us off, I did have a few uh, kind of comments. Um, I think it's a great memo. I was wondering if we could add in the the scope section or somewhere that all of the points listed are not in a particular order. Uh, meaning that they're they're kind of an equal weight. Jenny, if that makes sense.
Okay, um. You think there's an expectation that the first item mentioned will be that of greatest importance?
I think that's common. I think people usually read lists and they take a first kind of couple, couple glances at it. And they read the first three and they think that those are the the most salient points.
May I suggest that in the final sentence of the scope, um, where it says, please note the list of considerations is not intended to be comprehensive? Um, or prioritized or listed in order of importance?
Unless they were Jenny, I'd love to hear from you to know, was that your intent?
Jenny, you're muted.
Jenny, yeah, you're muted.
Yeah, no, it wasn't my intent that it's in order of priority. I don't know. I I wouldn't be able to uh identify a priority, I don't think. So I'll, I can add the uh phrase or something similar to what Anna just proposed and that'd be great if that covers it for everybody.
Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Good call, Max.
Thank you, Max. Okay, so not intended to be comprehensive or listed in order of importance or listed.
Priority.
Yeah. Okay, so moving right along, can we, has everyone had our chance to look at this scope? And be impressed by it? Because I think that um, using uh as a sorting feature, the distinguished budget presentation award in two thousand and twenty one from the Government Finance Officers Association is a brilliant stroke. Okay.
So, so most of the items that are listed in here are not necessarily, you know, I think that the uh GFOA, which is what their Government Finance Officers Association is referred to as. Um, I think that they actually have a pretty comprehensive list of criteria that they look at when they're evaluating whether or not you're going to get the award. I didn't really rely on that so much as I just, my personal opinion, maybe professional opinion is uh appropriate. Of what was lacking or what could be improved in our budget is really what I went by. Um, and then when I looked at what other cities are doing, when Christine and I looked at that, we use cities that had received that award and Bremerton has received the award in the past. They're just not uh currently getting it. So.
I I wanted to add a comment that I really, really appreciate as a citizen. The emphasis on um different ways of engaging the citizenry, the the what am I looking for? The the residents of Bremerton, the constituents, I guess, would be the best way to put it and um that you you looked at a lot of different ways to do that and I and I, I don't know, I guess I'd encourage the city, I'm saying this for the council people present, uh to consider more than one way to do this because not everybody is going to be grabbed by the same thing. So, one person may love the graphics, another person may have time for meetings, et cetera. So, anyway, thank you.
And I kind of want to piggyback off what Deborah said, because I I agree and and coming from a a private kind of environment, um, where we have a bit more resources to do more thorough budgets, so, you know, with that context in mind. Um, in kind of the private sector, uh, a lot of the times what you see is is multiple cuts of a certain budget. Um, so a cut, you know, for for say citizens, a cut for say administrators, um, and a cut for say, you know, financially savvy people. Um, and and I, I think you kind of alluded to that Jenny in in the memo, but if there's a way maybe to suggest that, if there's the resources available to do that, that would be helpful, I think, for citizens. You know, rather than a thirty fifty page document that no one has time to read, you know, a simple three page, you know, document that that they can just skim. And and granted, yes, you know, exhibits help with that and and he, you know, uh, like you alluded to, you know, different, different views help with that. But people get overwhelmed, I think, with with massive documents. Uh, and and they don't even bother. Uh, so I think just having, you know, three different cuts and a varying length, um, could potentially help.
Well, I do know that our resources are uh skeletal for budget, uh, when you say that. So e- e- even my suggestions, you know, I have to keep it in mind, uh, that we really, so I refer to, hey, Bainbridge Island had a great uh write-up from the finance officer. And uh Mike Riley says, you realize that uh City of Bainbridge Island has ten people in their budget department. We have one point something.
Holy cow.
Yeah, so it's uh.
Sure, that's, that's fair.
Yeah, but I, I did try to get to that in here, I in different ways, just proposing, uh, you know, two-page graphics or I, I can't remember if it made it to the report, to the memo, but one of the cities had like a thirty page, ours is three hundred pages or something.
Yeah, it's crazy. It's, and and for those of us who are not finance leads or uh ma- as mathematically inclined as you and Max are, that's just a whole lot of ego. My eyes are going to glaze over by about page twenty. You know, if I knew it was only thirty pages, I could probably power through it, but oh my god, um. I also wanted to put a bug in Anna and Quinn's ear regarding and I think Eric might know the history, might be able to give you some more texture on why we went to annual from biennial budgets. Because that also strikes me as a way to get a little more manpower behind it.
Well, um, it was my understanding so far that uh council felt that a biennial budget gave them even less control over the budget process.
I have that comment in my memo, but that was just kind of generally speaking, what MRSC's uh feedback has been about the biennial uh budget. It, I don't know Bremerton specific, uh, it sounded like it was a change in the mayor. Just the timing of it was going from, you know, one mayor, only one mayor did it. It was Lynn Horton. I I don't know the former mayors. I'm a little bit familiar of Kerry Bozeman. Uh, not personally, but just some of the history, but under his leadership, it was changed.
Well, I will confirm with Eric on Wednesday, um, and
Yeah, see if he knows anymore about that history because it may not be purely con- um. And Jenny alluded to this, I think some of it may be political control as well, so.
Yes, that was what I meant by council having even less control over the budget.
Got it, got it, yeah.
I will confirm with Eric. I'd just like to throw in right here that um a majority of the new council after this, this year's budget, after the two thousand and twenty-two budget hearings um, agreed that the process needed to be more transparent and to give us greater time to be, to give a thoughtful review of the budget. Um, so, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying. And I vow that I will ask Eric. All right. Um, please go ahead. Does anyone else else have anything on item one in this memo?
Not item one, but I have a comment on item nine.
Okay, well, I have a really quick comment on item one D, which is, I thought this was a great way to the Roseville, Minnesota, a really great way to make sure that you're getting feedback from Bremerton residents. Um, with a survey where the residents provide their name and address, answer three questions, submit the form. Um, I I thought that was an excellent and simple thing, and o- of course, it would rely on a a budget that told a story and was clear to laypeople. Um.
I believe that that's Jeff Coughlin's hometown.
The Roseville, Minnesota? He is a master researcher in like, what i- what is anybody else doing?
Well, I I'm not sure, uh, Christine knew that he's from Roseville, Minnesota, and so she looked up what they had going on and she saw, she saw that, so.
See, I didn't know that.
I think that's how it came about.
Alrighty then. Um, okay, so nobody else has anything on on item one? And we're all okay with the intent, the increase the opportunity? Yes, um.
I'm raising my hand.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Christine, please go.
I just want to give credit. It was Jeff Coughlin who forwarded that newsletter to, you know, he forwarded like the whole thing and said, hey, take a look at this.
You know, that guy needs to join a support group for like, people who research too much. It's really impressive. Thank you, Christine. Um, so, uh, number two, you're, you don't have anything until item nine, Mike, Max, right? Okay, anything on number two? Because basically, this is, and Quinn can back me up, um, this is because he's been through two budgets. I've only been through one. Um, it was, a lot of it was, you know, here's our department, here's how it's organized, here's what we do, here's what we did last year, here's what we're gonna do in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and then after we had absorbed all this new information, then we were hit with figures and how they were apportioned among the general and various special funds. So, just breaking it down into here's how your government works. Um, sometime in September, for example, might help um increase resident participation. So. Everybody okay with that? You can be grouchy about it later. You don't have to be grouchy right now. Just be grouchy by email. Um, and then number three, just more time, like last year, we had, I think, eight days, maybe nine days between the budget being published and our final questions and answers.
I would, I would even actually suggest maybe putting in a suggestion for a certain portion of time, so just being a little bit more say, five business days or, you know, seven business days or whatever we feel appropriate. Uh, just to put a little bit more uh suggestion in the suggestion.
Okay, so modifying the budget calendar to provide council at least fourteen business days, at least ten business days?
Yeah.
So be a little more prescriptive, kind of.
Does that seem okay by everyone else?
At at least that, there were a lot of citizens that wanted to weigh in and and they felt like there wasn't enough time.
You and me both. Okay, so what do you think? Like, do you think if the, and here I'm addressing you, Marwan, English really needs a something to say singular versus plural. Christine, I see you. Um, if we had the educational presentation and and we increased the outreach about what was going to happen, do you think, um, we could then have like, for example, one evening could be just the public works presentation? Um, or just the finance? Okay.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I think that would be helpful. And then I think you were talking about even setting up some, I don't know if this was you that was gonna do it. Setting up small town, uh, town hall meetings where people could come in and discuss. Was that something that you discussed right before our budget was approved last year?
Well, to do it as as district meetings, um, I I know that's something that uh we are planning to do for the comp plan. I've already done one um, for the comp plan, but, okay, um.
I would, I would think even combined district meetings, I mean, you might not have to have six separate. That's a lot of overhead, I'm thinking to, for each council person, seven, sorry, seven. Uh, district meetings is a lot of overhead to plan and organize for uh, some districts, it it might not pay off, right? So we don't know until, we don't know what we don't know, but uh, just a thought, if you could do three or four.
Okay, um, I'm I'm going to call on Christine in just a minute. Um, I I do a monthly town hall. So for me, it's easy, but finding a venue, um, a free venue takes quite a while. Um, I am fortunate in that the Public Works facility is in my district. So I think that having all of these at City Hall m- might turn out to be simpler, like that kind of like combining all seven of them. Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry, Vice President, please go ahead.
N- no, go ahead.
Christine, you have been patient sitting on a monument. Please speak.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm not muted. Can you hear me? Okay, so just working back, because I, because I'm council staff, we kind of dial in with finance on scheduling the workshops and on, you know, for council's calendar. You know, study sessions, public hearings, all of that. So I wanted to clarify, we're, are we talking about when we're talking ten business days, that's just when it's presented, you know, it's after the workshops, it's been presented, but it's not coming to council yet. So are you basically tacking on an additional ten days? Because currently, we have two hearings scheduled. That's actually more than ten business days. And people can speak at each hearing and they can provide written comments during the workshops and the study sessions. So I'm just trying to work backwards and see what the intent of the ten business days would be to help, you know, I'm visualizing this calendar and how, how do we tell?
So, on October nineteenth of last year, the budget was published on the city website.
Mm-hmm.
On October twenty-seventh of last year, the final questions and answers on the budget were held.
Mm-hmm.
So that's like one.
And then the first hearing was the next week.
Yeah, so it was like literally eight calendar days later. Um, six business days. So, really, at least ten business days. And if that means that the budget has to be published earlier in order to meet with the other um, you know, the other requirements of the RCW, then that's what we're recommending is however, a- almost on Christine, like whatever has to be done to give us more time so that we're not, we and the public aren't subjected to a fire hose of information. Please go ahead, Christine. Thank you.
My my last question, Chair, was, um, so would this come after that initial presentation? And then am I assuming that the proposed uh town hall and extra time to digest the budget would happen in that window? And then we would come to the public hearings? Is that how that would play out?
Um.
As a suggestion, I'm just trying to see if that's where we're going.
Yeah, right now, the time, after you.
Uh, I would just like to say that what I've done in this memo is to try to present some ideas without pinpointing it, you know, like, increase the opportunity for public engagement to facilitate a more meaningful exchange of ideas between the government and residents. The City of Redmond's doing this, the City of Kirkland's doing this, the City of Roseville, Minnesota is doing this. I'm not telling them what to do or how to do it. I'm just saying, you know, increase, generally speaking, you know, you need to increase the opportunity for public engagement. Here's some ideas about how you might want to go about that. They may come up with something totally different. You know, same with the calendar. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a long discussion. It's going to be, what does council want? How do they want to see it play out? You know, you're gonna maybe want to modify the whole calendar by an ordinance, and I don't want to be pinpointing it needs to be by ten days, you know, I, uh, anyway, that's what I've tried to do in the memo, is to leave it, you know, here's the general problem. Here's some ways that you might fix it, but I wasn't going to dictate the specifics. Max?
Thank you very much for the correction.
And I I completely I agree with you, Jenny. I don't think you want to like be, you know, this is what you have to do versus this is what was best practice. Um, and I I wonder, you know, to that, to that end, if you, if your research, I don't want to make you do more work, but if your research has shown, you know, what best practices among the cities that you quoted, how many days maybe they have given their citizens uh, to to review? And if maybe we could quote that as a minimum. Uh, or just to say that if we do, if we do go out with a ten-day, you know, business uh suggestion that we say, you know, we preface it to say that this isn't, you know, um, I don't know the best way to phrase that, but this isn't, you know, the uh an ironclad rule, so this is just a suggestion. Um, and something to consider.
I think that the ten days is uh gonna be arbitrary, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure what I'll pinpoint on, and also if it uh, if it didn't work, you know, it could come back at me. You know, it really should be them, you know, here's your problem, fix it.
Yeah. I got it.
Quickly, just to follow, I do want to, you know, just say that I do think giving a a certain number, though, is valuable, because people tend to gloss over suggestions without concrete details.
I agree that that is true, but I think Jenny's point is that these are seven, the council is seven different people, all with equal um autonomy. So it's not like I can go to them and say, or Quinn and I even can go to them and say, the audit committee has decided this. Um, you know, accept or reject. It's, it's something for them to look at and discuss. And if they say, I don't know, you know, I've got enough on my plate, you think about it, but it has to be brought to council and I think that's a, is that making sense?
It does, but I think then arrange would be appropriate admin.
Okay.
What did you say, Max?
Arrange.
Yeah, suggested range.
Okay, so let's put that on the, let's put a pin in that and and um, Debra, is it okay if we just call each other by first names in this meeting? Everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, Deborah.
I think, I think, I think Marwan was ahead of me, so I'll.
No, no, go ahead, Deborah. I'll, I'll jump in after you.
Okay, okay, so had two things to add. One, I hear what you're saying about being prescriptive with I guess, first of all, we can't solve all of these calendaring issues in this meeting, and it's really not our place to do that. So, I'm gonna give that up. And, um, who? Maybe be a little softer in your suggestion to say, for example, town XYZ gives their citizens ten days to respond after initial publication. So, so, in other words, give examples and those examples might lead council to consider uh, something along those lines, so that you're not saying, oh, we should do this. I I get that. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
It's kind of in there in one A. The City of Redmond hosted five public meetings in two thousand and twenty-two, including one in July and one in August.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Marwan, please go ahead.
It is, my, my question was, um, you know, we're, you were to list the ten days, just because we're talking about that. And the question is really for Anna and Quinn. Would it be more beneficial to have it tacked on to that, the the five days, which it was last year? Or the six days, and then adding the ten there, or putting it before? What would be more advantageous for the community to have more time to, you know, digest it? Come back with their, with their thoughts and potentially sway the council? Where it doesn't appear to be just a foregone conclusion. I think some folks in the community had a sense that it was like, okay, we're, we're saying what we gotta say, but, you know, you guys have already made your decision.
Um, I would, I think that that's a valuable input. I would also add that the budget is prepared by the mayor and staff, like by the entire executive branch, and the first time that council sees it typically is when it is put up on the website, like last year on October nineteenth. Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah. Did you, did you have any further? Oh, I'm s- I'm so sorry, Jenny, please go ahead.
You know, I think that's also important, too, is is the suggestion is to get the word out more than to articulate that also, because the community doesn't have that understanding. And so I think to clarify those things is is really impactful and understanding what the process is. I mean, that's one of the major reasons why I wanted to sit on this committee. It was to learn as a citizen and also share that information out.
Thank you. Jenny, did you want to respond to this before I call on Quinn?
Well, well, I'd just like to get clarification. Is it the, is the date that we're talking about when it's provided to the public? When it's available to the public? So, like for two thousand and twenty-four, you know, this is, um, many of the dates relating to the budget have a minimum date that they have to occur. And so next year, November twenty-one is the deadline. You cannot let this happen any later than November twenty-one. That's the date that it's made publicly available. So, I think it's council that can uh create an ordinance to modify the calendar. And if they want it, you know, if it's the date, if you're looking to have that ten days earlier, you know, it it moves a lot of things. There's a Christine can probably talk about it more, but there's a lot of moving parts with the uh budget. You know, the different levels of review that it has to go through and, uh, I don't know, there's uh maybe fifteen different deadlines that they deal with, at least. I haven't counted them, but.
And the terminus ad quum, it, the, 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 the delivery date. Yes, we can't move that. The only direction we can go is to um amend RCWS thirty-five thirty-three oh five seven or whatever. Um, to, to allow the public budget to, because when the budget is published is also when it becomes available to council. Those two things are, that's the same action. Um, uh, Max, I see you, but I, Christine is first, so I'll come re- coming right back to trying to run this democratically. Um, yeah, Christine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so we are already operating under the two thousand and twenty-four budget schedule. The first line on it is March first, so they're already, finance is already operating, and it's literally calendared out, including the budget.
Including the budget amendments at the end of the year. So this is not set in stone. I'm just saying that we're already, we're already moving. And we actually have the second public hearing on November fifteenth because of the, the holidays. So we're already working backwards from that second public hearing. So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where I'm coming from as far as just when I hear dates, like there's that and I'm also looking at the BMC. Um, as far as, um. Implementation of the budget, I'm. I'm not clear on.
No, I thought that was a vague.
To change that schedule. A lot of times we just talk to finance. And maybe they move when a workshop is or plug in some dates, but, but I just wanted to share that, that we are underway.
Yeah, no, totally get that. Um, Christine, while we're in this meeting, can you please just call me Anna? It's really fine. Okay, because I feel weird calling you Christine and having you call me Chair.
Well, Chair, just because you can't see me and I want, um. Anyway.
Fair enough. Okay.
Thanks for.
Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Another, uh, comment slash idea, um, and, and just to go along with, you know, I appreciate that the dates are somewhat firm and. And it's difficult to move dates around, but. I wonder, you know, is another kind of thought to that, i- if there's just a way to publicize it better maybe because I'm speaking as a citizen. I'm a CPA obviously, but as a citizen. I don't know when this is happening. You know, when I, when I see transit, for instance, having a, a community outreach effort, I see. Posters plastered over every transit stop saying, hey, you know, questions and comments accepted over this right now, please comment. But. Unless I'm tuned in to this whole. City process, I don't even know when this is happening. Uh, so just having. Some sort of, you know, outreach. Uh, even if it's just listed on our website somewhere, uh, just to put a, a little bit more effort over it.
Oh, heck yeah.
And I know we want to move on. I just wanted to add in there, you know, it's pretty shocking to hear that you're get, you're getting the budget at the same time as everyone else. I, I think you guys should, well, we should all get it a little bit earlier so you have more time as a council to digest it. At the sixty-six working days.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that's why the biennial budget makes more sense to me. Honestly.
Okay. Um, I will add that in my comments to the, to the council. Um. Quinn, you raised your hand earlier. Did you have something?
No, I think it was summarized by Jenny and Christine, um, just that we would have to look at the BMC and also. Knowing that finance is already. Working on it. And so if we did do any sort of modifications as a council, it would most likely be for twenty twenty-four and not for twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four is the one that's already underway. Uh, but it can still. I think that the date that it's made publicly available could still be modified, even though we're already. Uh, planning the first deadline. Uh. We can still adjust the future deadlines.
Yeah, and, and that would be a council decision.
And it would make us so popular with staff.
Surely they understand.
I promise you, we will become deeply unpopular, but. There you have it. Um, anything more on items two or three? Okay. Um. I thought item four was great. It provides context. Anybody have anything else on that one? Okay. Um. Number five is sort of a continuation of that and. I really like, as a devoted lover of footnotes, I really liked this.
I liked five, but. I, I think it, I took it, maybe my interpretation is different from yours, Anna, because. I took this to mean a true summary, like really succinct. Um. And. As she bolded, tell the story.
Yes.
And it, it very, it very much goes into number seven, which. Personally, I think needs to be bumped way up in the list. If we haven't changed our strategic priorities in fourteen years, oh my goodness.
Well, isn't it longer than fourteen? Nope, you're right. Yeah, fourteen years.
That's what she said, yeah.
All right.
I mean, that's. I think it would be more relevant having the, uh, council priorities that you guys just developed at your retreat. Something like that, rather than something, it's, I don't know if you've read that section recently, but it.
Today.
It's. From the budget book.
Yeah. Yeah, and I particularly loved the preservation of natural open space as a major priority. More honored in the breach than the observance.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, okay, I'm trying to be a good chair. Um. I thought that Jenny, your whole focus on. Telling a story is. It like that, that's. That's the elevator pitch. That's just like the budget has to tell the story.
And, and Mike Riley knows that. It, it's a, it's a, uh. I- it's a thing in MRSC, you know, your budget needs to tell the story. And, uh, he knows that. They've got a weakness there. So he hasn't seen this memo yet, but it, it won't come as a surprise, I'm sure.
Okay. Um. Number six, that just makes really good sense to me. I'm just gonna start moving forward a little because. Un- unless somebody, you know. I love the idea of updating the strategic priorities. Not only to align with, um, what we're doing now, but to align with, I don't know. Actions. You know, it's like, what have we done? For the past fourteen years and what are we gonna do? A- anybody have anything else on number seven? Apart from Deborah's conviction that it should go way up to the top?
I agree with Deborah's conviction on that one.
Okay. Okay. Christine, please put that in the minutes.
Say that. Say that, um. I think you allude to this in the, in the graphic and then some other things, but it's kind of like. What did we say we do? What did we actually do? Right? A, a report card. That could be. Really basic and that graphic is a perfect example of that kind of thing. Where it's like, well, we said we'd do this and we're gonna give ourselves a letter grade. I don't, something. Because right now, the budget to a lot of citizens just feels like a black hole. Yeah, seriously. So.
I am among them. I'm still working on this stuff.
Yep.
So I'm gonna give you another. Considered objection to a biennial budget. Which is that we saw in the last year. That. The council got four new members out of seven. Right? And if we have a biennial budget, that means that within any counselor's four-year term. They'll participate in two budgets only. So they'll sort of get it by the second one, just the way. I am getting it now that I've been through one. Um. So I'm just saying it. Yeah, Max, please go ahead.
I had a quick, quick thought for, for Jenny. Have you heard of a Sankey diagram? I, I've seen some budgets incorporate it. I know some private employers do. Uh, it's a great visual way of illustrating where funds, funds flow. Uh, give, give it a look, it, you know, when you have a, when you have a, a second, maybe we can. Suggest it or if you don't feel it's appropriate, then it's not, but. It's a, it's a really popular visual aid.
Uh, how do you spell it?
Sankey, S-A-N. K-E-Y.
I'll look at it. Thank you.
Not like Banksy the muralist, but Sankey the vigil.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um. Jenny, did you have anything? Am I like zooming through this too fast?
Well, I, I'm gonna respond to your comment about, uh, the every other year and only having, uh. A chance to participate in the budget a couple of times in a four-year term. Uh, there is a mid. Period, uh, adjustment. That everyone would participate in. It's just not as extensive as going through an entire budget process, so. Um. But your. Your point is well taken. Especially when there's so many new people. This is, I think, rare, but Christine would know.
It's rare.
Okay.
All right. Um. And finally, at last, Max, leap forward and comment on number nine.
Just a quick, uh, ask if we could maybe add the, the link to the City of Fairfield's, uh. Uh, budget that we mentioned. Uh, I tried Googling it and I couldn't quickly find it, so I was wondering if you could add that.
Anyone else on number nine?
Apparently.
Okay, um. All right, so we're making that, um, that change to item number nine. Uh, number ten is completely out of my skies.
Uh, when. I spoke with, I think it was Mike, he said that the software would cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's not gonna happen.
So, yeah, but if they were going to a biennial. Budget and they needed to get new software anyway, then maybe. It would work out, but anyway, it's just a thought. It's not something that anyone has to do. I just put it out there.
I don't, I don't know how it works with the public sector, but is there a way to pull funds from multiple cities to kind of pitch in? And maybe like time share a budget software system? Uh, you know, rather than every city paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars, is there a way to just? Crowdfund a, a license? That multiple cities can use. I, I don't know.
I don't know. I can, uh, look into that.
Please do because. I have zero expertise on this.
So multiple cities would share a, a license? Do you think that what it would be looking like?
There might have to be a nominal fee for separate databases or something, but yeah, that might work.
I'll ask our IT people. And if it's. If it is a possibility, then I will add it.
Okay, thank you. So it's number eleven that I was thinking of about the footnotes. Like links to the source documents and, um. That was the one I was thinking about, sorry.
Okay. Did you have additional items that you think should be added? I, I was hoping I would have more, but I, I just couldn't.
Really, um. The thing I keep thinking about lately is Einstein's famous dictum that you never really understand something until you can explain it to your grandmother. Right? Um. Nobody feels like they're being talked down to if they're being compared to Einstein. I feel pretty sure about that. Um, and it's, it really is, uh. That's. Like, that's the scarlet thread, I think, that runs through all of this. Is that. It's gotta tell a story. It's gotta speak to the people. Of Bremerton, um. And it's gotta be made shorter because people are not sitting down and reading five-volume Victorian novels anymore.
I can't believe how long the budgets are. Anchorage is over a thousand pages.
Or ten people.
Or.
Right. A page per person.
Max.
Or maybe even some sort of podcast. I don't know if the city does that of just, you know, some, some, so someone narrating the highlights of a budget. You know, you can read that, you can listen to that over a commute over the ferry. You know, uh, people would do that, I think.
If only we had someone on the audit committee who had experience with podcasts.
Might be somebody.
Marwan hosts a podcast called The Conduit. So, yeah. Um, okay, Marwan, over to you. I know zero about podcasts.
Oh, I think that's, uh, easy enough to do. We did a little bit of that last year. Uh, we're doing that right now for Olympia. Now we've got quite a few people tuning in. I don't know if they're all local here to Kitsap, but. Some of those, uh, posts have two hundred views, uh, so they're very interested in what's happening there. Uh, in any format that can help with access. Uh, so that more people can participate, uh, I'm all for it. Uh, the only other thing I was gonna say for number eleven was, you know, in streamlining this, that there could be a legend that may be tied to. Any of the strategic planning that the, that the city has.
The strategic initiatives, um, the mayor's initiatives. Council goals and priorities.
Yeah.
Maybe if it was color-coordinated or assembled.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I'm sure I follow it and I'm the one that's gonna have to add it.
So it basically be like, I, I'm sorry, Marwan, please go ahead.
So, like, let's say for the, um. Community block grant funds or. Things that are earmarked that, uh, is important would just be. Somehow, a, a, a legend, either it'd be color-coded. Or some type of a, uh, symbol that would just say, hey, this is tied to this. Uh, so we can quickly, as we're scanning it, just see how these things line up. With the initiatives of the city.
Right, so. It's like rental assistance and weatherization, just. As a, for instance, that would connect to. The S, the strategic priorities, the mayor's initiatives and council goals. It would be a trifecta. Right, with just like a little icon, a colored icon or something just next to it.
Yep, that'd be really easy to.
Is that?
Absolutely. Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm writing. Am I missing something? Should I be calling on someone? Okay. Did anyone have anything further on this? Jenny, did we go through it in the, in a way that you felt gave due respect to your hard work?
Oh, I thought it was fine. Uh, main thing is that everyone's comfortable with. The memo. And that we've answered everyone's questions or.
Hey? And it's not even dark yet.
We have more to do.
Miles to go before we sleep.